President.
Commissioner Freitas.
Present.
Commissioner Meyer.
Present.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
And Commissioner Benson. Thank you.
Oh, would someone like to lead the flag salute?
Great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I was counting on you to lead me. Um, have approval of minutes from last meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you want me to roll call or you just want to eye everybody?
I guess we'll eye everybody.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, oral communications. Does anyone here have anything they would like to discuss not on tonight's agenda? That looks to be all staff in our participants list, correct? I will call that a no. We do not have any continued public hearings, um, but we do have a new public hearing for Pearson Properties.
And Senior Planner Lisa Savage will present that to you this evening.
Great.
Yep. I'm disabled.
Should be fixed.
Thank you. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you this evening is Pearson Properties' general plan amendment and zone reclassification to change the land use designation and zoning of 3116 Harrison Avenue. Here's a bird's eye view of the subject property location and zooming in, the property is located at the southwest corner of Harris Street and Harrison Avenue. To the east of the center line of Harrison Avenue is the county's jurisdiction. Although the property has two APNs, APN 013-191026 and 027, it is one legal parcel totaling .66 acres. APN 027 is improved with a 3,000 square foot office building. Looking south from Harris Street, you can see Schaefer's Ace Hardware in the background. And looking east from Harrison Avenue, you can see the entrance to the building. On April 19th, the city council approved the Pearson Properties' general plan amendment petition, which enabled them to apply for the general plan amendment and zoning reclassification for the subject parcel. The proposed project is to change the general plan land use designation from professional office in Brown to neighborhood commercial in Tan, which is the same neighborhood commercial as the designated lands to the north across Harris Street. The land use change would then require the site to be rezoned from hospital medical in blue to neighborhood commercial in pink, which is the same neighborhood commercial as the zoning to the north across Harris Street. The applicant intends to use the existing building for non-medical offices, which is not allowed under the current zoning. The proposed change would facilitate the reuse of a vacant structure for medical or commercial offices, as well as a number of other uses. So what does this do? The change in land use and zoning will allow greater flexibility of use of the parcel. Both the current and proposed zoning allow a similar mix of use types, but the current HM zone only allows offices and some commercial sales, service, and civic uses if they are intended to primarily serve employees, patients, and visitors of medical uses. However, the proposed NC Zone District allows for both medical and commercial offices, as well as a number of other uses. In addition, certain uses under the professional office, hospital medical designation that require a use permit will be principally permitted under the neighborhood commercial designations, thereby making changes in uses simpler, more streamlined, and not restricted to primarily serving medical uses. Under the current HM zoning, the maximum floor area ratio is 2.5, which will increase to three under the neighborhood commercial zoning. A far of 2.5 allows up to 72,000 square feet of floor area on the .66 acre parcel. And with the increase to a far of three, the maximum floor area will increase to 86,400 square feet, thereby allowing for more denser development. The ability to add multifamily residential units in the future will not be lost and will actually increase because multifamily dwelling units will go from being conditionally permitted to principally permitted. A comparison table of the allowed land uses in the hospital medical and neighborhood commercial zone districts, including required discretionary permits, is included in staff, in the staff report as attachment two. A comparison table of the development standards for the hospital medical and neighborhood commercial zone districts is included as attachment three. And the definition of the P, of the professional office and neighborhood commercial land use designations and the general and specific purposes of the hospital medical and neighborhood commercial zone districts are included as attachment four. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff believes the required findings can be made. Therefore, staff recommends we hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the Pearson Properties' general plan amendment and zone reclassification. Myself and I have suggestion motion when you're ready, and myself and Principal Planners Kristen Getz and Kristen Kenyon, as well as I think the applicant are available for your questions.
The applicant is with us in the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions. Uh, I noticed that there's a reduction in setback. I think you've mentioned that in your presentation, that ordinarily in the hospital medical would be a 10-foot setback, and with neighborhood commercial applied, it would be a zero setback for the front. Is that correct?
I can check real quick.
I'm just seeing it in the staff report in the comparison table that you provided, uh, attachment three.
Then yes.
And so I guess my question would be, I know that there's not a proposal to redevelop the site at this time, but by changing the zoning, we have to expect that that could always occur. And therefore, if someone were to take advantage of this zero-foot setback, I could see visibility issues. It's a very high-traffic intersection. Would Public Works weigh in on design at that point? How would that be dealt with if there was a potential traffic issue surrounding build-out to the full, you know, allowance under the zoning code?
So they would need to comply with the site visibility triangle requirements in our zoning code. So even if it was a principally permitted use that was being proposed, they would still need to comply. And we would bring in Public Works Traffic Engineering as needed for principally permitted. If it was a conditionally permitted use, then they would receive a referral and have the opportunity to comment at that point in time.
Thanks. And the only other question I had was with regard to, it looks like from a review of the tables you provided, that there are no uses currently authorized in the hospital medical zoning district that would be lost by the change to the neighborhood commercial, just maybe a change in the permitting pathway. Is that a fair, I, I reviewed the thing. I just wanted to see if there was anything I missed perhaps.
So it looks like drive-through facilities, non-food serving goes from conditionally to not allowed?
Right. Everything seemed to carry forward. It just might be a different requirement as far as the permit, you know, it might be more principally permitted, but still permitted.
Well, that's what I was saying, was drive-through facilities, non-food serving type would not be allowed in the NC Zone District.
Oh.
Um, and neither would hospitals.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, there you go. Okay. So, so we'd be losing out on the potential for a hospital at the corner or a drive-through. Okay, that's it.
And I'm sorry, the last one is, uh, social services.
Okay. Alright, thanks for clarifying that. That's all my questions.
Okay, we're open to a public hearing. It looks like maybe the applicant is here, would like to say something?
Commissioners, I'm Greg Pearson, and we bought the property, um, not that long ago. Um, it hasn't really been touched or cared for for 20, 30, 25 years or so. And so we're in the process of upgrading it, leveling it out, and cleaning it up, and roofing it and all that. Trying to make it a nice corner again. It's a nice visible intersection. Um, the purpose for the rezone request is because, as it was pretty much evidence here, I can lease it to just about a lot more people than I could if it was just medical. And with Providence Health kind of taking over a lot of the local doctor office, um, it's kind of gotten more consolidated. And so, um, I don't think we necessarily need as many medical offices, but if we do, I can still, you know, have them in there. But meanwhile, it gives me more opportunity to lease it to other uses on that corner. And so that's what I'm trying to do, is to make sure I'm not captive, you know, captive to one possible tenant providence when, you know, they're great, but, you know, when you only have one possible tenant that goes in, it's kind of hard to negotiate. So, um, making it more flexible would really be helpful to make the project viable, so. Any questions for me? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
He sent the wrong fucking information up.
I just can't feel lower in the frustration.
Alright.
What makes it illegal here?
Well. Any other discussion that we would like to have?
So we did have somebody join us on the Zoom meeting.
Oh, that wants to speak?
I don't know if they want to speak or not. Frisk, if you are wishing to speak, either please unmute and speak, or raise your hand.
Alright, well, we'll move on and close the public hearing and bring it back to Commissioners, if you would like to discuss or make a motion.
I would say, you know, for my part, it seems like a pretty straightforward request to expand uses. It is, you know, close to some residential uses. I could see there being a need to be sensitive to surrounding residents, but the fact that a notice was sent out and nobody came with any, um, you know, concerns or interest suggests it likely will not pose an issue for the neighbors. So those things being considered, I have no issue with the request.
I'll basically just dito what Dila said. Commissioner Freitas.
We can pull up the resolution. Or the motion. Lisa, would you be able to share your screen and bring up the motion?
It's too late.
Are you wanting to say something, sir?
Forgive me, but the information you sent out for the Zoom meeting on your blue, uh, card to neighbors was not inaccurate in terms of Zoom contact and, um, passcode number. After 15 minutes of trying to access your information, I finally found it on your agenda. So if you didn't get any participation in your public hearing, it could be likely that you sent out erroneous information, which is really unfortunate. I live around the corner from the proposed project. I just wanted to know what they're proposing for an extremely busy intersection. And it may be just great, um, but, uh, I did have a concern. Thank you for acknowledging my waving of my hand in my video. I was actually just intending to listen to what the proposal was, but I'm just letting you know you sent out the wrong information.
Thank you for that. I'm sure staff can make corrections going forward.
So if that's the case, however, um, I think that we need to renotice this item.
Okay.
For a future meeting, uh, so that everybody does have the opportunity to.
Do you have access to that card to confirm that it was the wrong information?
I don't have it here with me.
Okay.
You, uh, it's, it's here. And it, it gave the meeting ideas 865-2735-6937 with a passcode 241657. I was able to access you only by going to Zoom 875-7463-4398 with the passcode 627427. So I'm not sure what the difference was, but that's what my card reads. I'm not trying to delay the Pearson project unnecessarily, but I also don't want the planning commission to have a problem with their hearing process and this project. So I just want to share this information for your edification and due process.
Thank you.
This is Raylene. Kristen, I'm looking it up right now to confirm.
So he's, uh, Mr. Frisk has obviously gotten a, a, uh, public hearing notice that had the wrong information on it, so.
Okay, so.
I apologize to the commission. I apologize to the public. I apologize to the applicant, but we will need to re, re-notice this and bring it back to you.
Types happen. Okay.
Are they checking within the city to verify that that information is relevant and follows Yes, I just, I just confirmed it. It's, it's wrong in the postcard.
Alright, so we will table this till the next meeting?
Uh, you don't even have to table it. We will just completely renotice it.
Okay. Sorry.
That's the problem. The beautiful and tricky thing about Zoom is it's so, so easy to do that, and I've definitely done that myself before, so. We'll, we'll see it next month.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that brings it into the public hearings. And it does look like we have no old business, but some new business, which is, if you guys read the letter, they're looking for a couple of stakeholders to meet sometime in August. Um, sounds like, um, a great thing to tune into. I unfortunately am not readily available much in August, so I don't know if someone, if you guys are, if this interests you.
So we're going to give you a, um, presentation about this under the reports and communications, so. As the chair indicated, we are looking for two volunteers or appointees, whatever you choose, to attend, uh, a stakeholder conversation, um, about the Waterfront Eureka Plan, which will be held, sometime in August. We'll figure the dates out exactly, once we have all of the, uh, appointees or volunteers. And, um, you would be able to attend either in Zoom, by Zoom, or in person, whichever you prefer.
Um, did you say that there, because I don't have anything listed in reports and communications, but you say you have something to go over on that?
We do.
Okay, so do you guys want to hear about it before volunteer? Alright, so let's move on to, uh, your report.
So Senior Planner Castellano is going to present the report to you.
Okay, I think we are looking at the wrong thing. Are we looking at my notes slide or the presentation?
The notes slide.
Okay, sorry about that. Alright, that should be correct.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, so I'm going to present some information on the Waterfront Eureka Plan, which is very exciting. Uh, I have a brief agenda. We, I will talk about the plan area. I'll go over the overall purpose of the Eureka Waterfront Plan and today's purpose for what we're requesting feedback from you. Um, the outreach timeline, themes from the outreach that we've done so far, scenario planning, um, and a project timeline and recap of today's purpose. And again, we're requesting your feedback. So the city's core area is a traditional center and cultural hub of the city. The plan area encompasses approximately 130 acres, which includes the Commercial Bayfront District, which is the largest district and has the most vacant and underutilized sites. The Old Town District, which has the most existing services and businesses, and 10% of the parcels are vacant or underutilized. And the Library District, which is primarily residential with similar redevelopment potential to Old Town, with considerably more surface parking than the other, than Old Town. Uh, these district names did come from the 2040 general plan. So the purpose of the waterfront specific plan is to provide a roadmap for development and redevelopment of the vacant and underutilized sites and buildings along and near Eureka's central waterfront, and to plan for at least 115 new housing units. So today, uh, is for us as staff to provide you information on what we've heard so far at the first two virtual workshops. And we are asking for feedback from you on the draft themes, district priorities, and scenarios that have been developed that I'll present later. Um, and I'll also let you know how to provide comments and feedback after tonight's meeting, which will be through an online survey on the project website, and there will be future hybrid virtual and in-person meetings. All of the feedback received from today's meeting and the previous meetings will be used for the preferred scenario in the specific plan. Uh, briefly, this is, um, kind of a snapshot of our webpage. And there, it's on www.waterfronteureka.com, and we have upcoming event details, past event recordings, the project survey that we really, really would like you to complete, and forward to whoever else is, would like to complete it, and interactive mapping activity. And, yeah. So I'm going to try to briefly go through this outreach timeline. So in March 2022, we had our first workshop. Uh, we did a Word Cloud exercise for each district to develop themes, and Vbox polling for feedback on priorities related to mobility, public parks and spaces, housing, business, and jobs, and tourism in each district. And I should clarify, um, that the, uh, these workshops were led by our consultant, Dudek, um, with support from us. Uh, the results of these interactive exercises at the first workshop, we're used to develop, uh, the interactive map that's on the website and the survey questions on the website. Uh, these interactive exercises also refined the vision for each district as laid out in the 2040 general plan, which went through its own outreach effort. So we aren't recreating the wheel here. In April 2022, we updated, excuse me, the website to answer additional questions we received at the March 10th workshop. So there's a lot of good Q and A on the website, talking about the plan. Uh, in June of this year, we released the online survey and the interactive map, and then we held a second virtual workshop on June 9th, which Dudek presented the results of the Word Cloud and Vbox polling exercises that I talked about in the first meeting, and present, then presented three alternative planning scenario sketches for each district, which I will show you later in the presentation. Uh, today is what I'm presenting now, and we're hoping to get any feedback or comments from you and any public that may be watching. And then next Tuesday, July 19th, Dudek will be doing a similar presentation, probably shorter than this one, to the city council as well to gather feedback and provide opportunity for more public comment. So the feedback from this meeting and the previous meetings and the meeting coming up at the city council meeting, um, oh, I'm sorry, I should, I should back up. We are also after the city council meeting, as Kristen said, we're planning stakeholder conversations. And those will happen in July to mid-August 2022. So the stakeholder groups included will be two representatives from the city committees and commissions. We're also including Eureka Main Street, local advocates such as Baykeeper and Epic and Aha, 350 Humboldt, and RCCER and CRTP, and hopefully I don't have to spell out all those acronyms. Um, the Eureka Chamber of Commerce, uh, staff from Eureka Visitor Center, Eddie Alexander, Cal Poly Humboldt. So we think we have a good snapshot for these stakeholder groups. Um, then we are tentatively scheduled to present the draft specific plan and preferred scenario to the planning commission and the city council for review and comment at another hybrid, at more hybrid meetings in November. And then we anticipate holding the public hearings on the specific plan and sequel sometime early next year. We anticipate February, March 2023, and those will also be hybrid virtual in-person meetings. So this slide and the next four are the results of the Vbox polling exercise I briefly touched on in the previous outreach timeline slide, which will show the priorities for each district that we've gathered so far. Uh, the March 10th virtual workshop participants were allowed to pick more than one priority use, so the higher the percentage, the more support that use had in the corresponding district. The percentages are based on total respondents. So the, the Commercial Bayfront District is represented in pink. The Old Town is in green, the library is in yellow, and the gray means, uh, none of the uses were supported or desired in the districts, and I'm about to show you some bar graphs. So the first question they asked was where it would be activated alleyways be most appropriate in, you know, either the Commercial Bayfront, Old Town, or Library District, or none at all. So we see the Old Town was definitely the most popular for activated alleyways and parklets. The next question was bike infrastructure. Where is that most appropriate and needed in each of the districts? So the Commercial Bayfront received the most votes for the bike infrastructure, while the other two districts also received conservative support. And then for expanded parking, less than 50% of the people supported expanding parking facilities in any of the districts, so. Uh, next, we asked about nighttime uses, and no one thought that nighttime uses were not important. And not surprisingly, almost everyone supported nighttime uses in Old Town, uh, as you can see in the green. Uh, the most voted, most voted for environmental education opportunities in the Commercial Bayfront, but they also thought it was important in the other districts, as you can see from this graph. Uh, a fair amount of votes supported a dog park in the Bayfront and Library Districts, and few didn't support dog parks in any district, as you can see in the gray. So for live-work units, a majority of the people supported live-work units in all districts, as you can see there. Uh, oh, definitely over 50% in all of them, and, um, almost to 80 in the Old Town. I guess that's 70%. Um, and the, and mixed-use housing received even more votes than the live-work units in all districts. You can see Old Town, like 90%, Commercial Bayfront, slightly less than 80, and Library District, 75. So definitely mixed-use was supported. And then senior housing in the Library District received the most support with little over 80%. And then it really wasn't supported, like 50% supported it in Old Town, and they didn't really support it in the Commercial Bayfront, so that was interesting. Um, let's see, so restaurants and retail, almost everyone thought that restaurants and retail was most appropriate in Old Town. As you can see, it's about 95% there, which is not. As you can see, it's about 95% there, which is not surprising. But there is still support for them in the other districts. You know, almost 50% supported it in the Library District and, uh, over 60% in the commercial bayfront. Uh, office spaces, every, everyone, uh, was, they're, they've, they weren't against it necessarily, but they didn't support it. You could see it was about 50/50. Maybe in the Library District, they supported office uses more. And then some people didn't support any new office uses as, at all, as you can see in gray. Um, and the neighborhood markets, uh, everyone did support the neighborhood markets in each district. Um, 50% or over for all of them, with, uh, the Library District getting the higher, over 80%. And then no one thought it was not appropriate, so there's no gray there. Everyone liked the neighborhood markets. Uh, for hotels, uh, and I'm sorry, I should have been, I, I should have gone. I'm sorry, I didn't talk about, so the district priorities, there were themes. There was tourism, business, jobs, housing, sorry. And I said it earlier, so when we get back to where I was, sorry. So for hotels, over 50% thought hotel uses could be in each district. Um, I guess maybe a percent didn't want it at all. Uh, cruise ships, people didn't really care about cruise ships coming in with 40% or less of the votes. And then vacation rentals, they were kind of supported. It was about 50%, um, and then over 20% didn't want any, um, vacation rentals. But you can see vacation rentals were, and hotels were more popular than cruise ships. So then at Workshop 1, I talked about this Word Cloud that was done. They asked participants to just write keywords that came to mind when they thought of each district. So for the bayfront, the most common words, you can see here, kind of, it's really small, sorry, is beautiful, followed by underutilized and potential. So our consultant helped drafted some key themes, um, for the bayfront district, which would be adaptable, revitalized community asset. And then in Old Town, a couple of keywords were, that stood out, were historic and walkable. And then they had in there like tourism and food and fun. Uh, so the, the draft key theme for that district is historic connected community hub. And then in the Library District, you could really see the keywords were potential historic. They had dirty and scary. Uh, so the draft key themes for the Library District was safe, residential, and opportunity to make it safe and support the residential, and there's opportunity for it. Um, next, I'm going to talk about the scenario planning. So Dudak prepared three different scenarios, which were alternative futures for each district, which consisted of the first scenario would be managed retreat. Um, the second would be tourism and visitor serving. And the third would be complete communities. So these scenarios were presented at the June 10th virtual meeting, which you will see the results shortly. Uh, they included current street view photos and a corresponding scenario sketch over the street view photo for a total of nine sketches, three per district. Uh, the idea is not to choose one of these three scenarios, but to figure out what is liked and disliked about each scenario to help shape the preferred scenario for the specific plan. So a little bit about the managed retreat scenario. This was selected, um, because, you know, as you can see in this map, most, most of the commercial bayfront and the plan area in half of Old Town are going to be affected by sea level rise. As you can see on the slide, 6.5 feet of sea level rises within the medium-high-risk adversion scenario for the 2100, um, year. Um, and it is at the higher end of what is possible by 2100. So it is a conservative number and should be taken into consideration when planning for new development. So with that, um, the, in the managed retreat planning scenario, we would want to limit new development in sea level rise hazard areas, as you saw in the blue in that previous map, and intensify development in other areas that are not in that sea level rise hazard area. So how might this look? In the commercial bayfront, open space, public access, parks, and temporary uses would be supported in the commercial bayfront. Um, in Old Town, high-density mixed-use buildings, uh, would be the highest density of all the scenarios. And then the Library District, just increasing, um, housing density there as well, because we need to, in the non-sea level rise areas, we really need to increase the density and intensity to make up for not developing in the sea level rise hazard areas. So here's a current street view photo of an area in the commercial bayfront. Uh, you guys probably recognize it. So we'd want to support open space and marshland to accommodate the sea level rise. Um, so we would imagine something like this, where the space stays open space. And any improvements can withstand flooding and be removed easily, such as trailheads and interpretive centers. Then for Old Town, um, this is a current vacant site, uh, in the Old Town District, as identified in the 2040 general plan. Some people might say it's on the edge, but it's, it's in that district, their 2040 general plan. So imagine hired, the highest density mixed use here, um, to avoid development in the sea level hazard rise areas. We would want, we would, uh, support, it would support first-floor commercial with apartments above. And it could look like this. So this is the highest density, um, example of our scenarios. Um, in Old Town, it would be five stories of housing above a first-floor commercial. Uh, so it's a six-story building, um, to, you know, accommodate growth here instead of in the, the sea level rise hazard areas. Um, in the Library District, for the managed retreat scenario, uh, you know, you would want to promote town, townhomes. We really just want to increase the density here as well. Probably keep it more residential in nature. So imagine this, a high-density housing for story apartments, that's it. And then I'm not going to read all of these. This, um, was a slide that Dudak prepared for us. Uh, they asked, you know, after those scenarios, they asked the participants to write their thoughts about each scenario. So I'm not going to read all these comments, but there are themes in each sentence related to density mixed use in pink. So if you can just see the pink color, that's talking about density mixed use. They're talking about housing in orange, open space in green, and design in blue. So the takeaway, uh, for the managed retreat scenario is that people were comfortable with the density in Old Town and the Library District, even though, uh, this was the most dense of the scenarios of those districts. Also, some people mentioned liking open space and active recreation in the bayfront, but no one specifically mentioned they liked or disliked the idea of the sea level rise, low, sea level rise retreat. Next, um, scenario for each of the sites is tourism and visitor serving. So here, the focus would be on attracting and serving tourists, um, which is, you know, already one of the priorities of our current LCP, Certified LCP. So how might this look like? Well, bayfront, the bayfront, we'd have hotels and conference centers. Uh, Old Town would be art gallery, live-work uses. And then the Library District, imagine like small hostels, bed and breakfast, and boutique restaurants with housing above. So for example, here along the boardwalk, um, I think we're looking north. Um, the, imagine a hotel, um, and conference center here potentially. It's behind, you know, where the new Dick Taylor chocolate, I think, is going. Um, here, we could envision something like this. So along the boardwalk, you have the hotel, conference center. I mean, even though it could be subject to sea level rise, you know, it's not, people aren't permanently living there, so people can't be evacuated. Um, Old Town, so, um, here's a current vacant site in Old Town. Can you imagine an art gallery and live-work residential units here? It could look like this. So this would be a first, uh, story of galleries and shops with a couple of stories of housing above, you know, with the buildings built, uh, you know, active streetscape, buildings built to the property line, looks like about. And then in the Library District, um, a tourism visitor serving scenario would be like a boutique restaurant with housing above, so envision this. So a little less density than Old Town, but still having a couple of floors of housing above a restaurant. And again, people were asked to write down what they liked about the tourism and visitor serving scenario. Um, I'm not going to read these again, but to summarize, the people, the participants liked the mixed use and the more housing, as you can see in pink and, um, orange. They seemed more enthusiastic about the focus on the design of the buildings and the streetscapes, which is in blue. Um, they wanted them to be attractive to tourists rather than being focused on specific serving, visitor-serving uses. Um, and then the comments are similar to the managed retreat, and no negative comments on the mix of modern and historic styles were received. Okay, and the last scenario is the complete communities. So places where people can live, work, and shop, focus on everyday uses and everyday district. So how might this look like? On the commercial bayfront, it could be mixed-use restaurant and retail with housing above, plus recreation. In Old Town, it could be mixed resident-serving uses with housing above and parking tucked behind, um, or under, or, you know, over podium, above active storefronts. Um, or in the Library District, it could be small resident-serving uses with condos above. So here's, um, another use of the board, uh, excuse me, street view photo of the boardwalk. So if you want to envision what it could look like with mixed-use retail and housing. So this is a little less intense than the one, than the scenarios, um, for the sea level rise outside of the, I'm sorry, the managed retreat outside of the sea level rise area, because this is about four stories of, um, housing over a story of retail. And then the Old Town site, imagine like grocery store with residential on top. So this is what it could look like. It could have a grocery store, um, on the bottom with, you know, maybe parking in the back. And if they're really savvy, potentially underground parking, but may not work there. Um, and, but really probably parking in the rear or the first floor, and then five stories of housing above. And then the Library District, um, we, you could support row homes, row houses with accessory commercial uses, um, and it could look like this. So with like a daycare mixed in with, um, the, the homes, a couple of stories, like townhomes or row houses. So again, the themes of, uh, these comments, uh, is that overall there was support for small neighborhood serving uses, like the market, and support for row houses and live-work units. And more of the comments were about uses rather than design, like in the manager tree and tourism and visitor serving scenario. Here we found more comments, though, that supported the positive economic aspects of the complete community scenario, as seen in the light blue. So overall, um, the, as you can see in this rectangle graph, pie graph thing, the overall, the complete community scenario did receive the most votes, which has slightly less tall, dense, and intense development compared to the Old Town and Library District managed retreat scenarios, showing people like the idea of creating an area that supports living, working, playing, and shopping in all-in-one area. Um, here's our project timeline. It is hard to see this as well, but we'll get this on the website as soon as possible. Um, so, but we saw the top circle, that's talking about our public meetings. We had two virtual workshops, you know, one and two there, the first two, March and June. Now we're in July, and that's the third public workshop. But it's actually two of them, because I'm presenting to you the Planning Commission tonight. And then Dudak will present to the City Council on July 19th. So, um, I would definitely highly recommend watching that and participating and providing comment. If you end up not being able to provide as much comment now, because you're kind of di- trying to digest it, maybe you have to go check the website and, um, see what's up there. Uh, let's see, then, um, in November, as I talked about in the outreach schedule, we will present the draft specific plan and draft preferred scenario, develop from all the feedback from these last two meetings, this meeting and the meeting of the City Council in November. And then we anticipate coming back to adopt the plan and CEQA at notice public hearings in early February or March of next year. Um, currently, the survey is live, and it will be closed by the end of August. So please, please, please take it. Uh, let's see, these next documents, the, uh, Plan Area Profile and Background Report and an Affordable Housing and Anti-Displacement Strategies Report, um, will be, are being finalized right now and should be on the website before the, um, City Council meeting next week. Also, these conceptual development scenarios have been done, and we're working on trying to get, um, like a rotating slideshow onto the website so everyone can see those, um, draft scenarios again and kind of pull out what they like or don't like. Uh, the draft specific plan for internal review should be to city staff, um, in September. And then, um, we should be able to finalize, um, the plan and bring it forward for review and comment, um, to the Planning Commission and the City Council in November, as I previously talked about. Uh, I should mention, the Dudak is working on a coastal consistency right now with what the, how the plan, um, is consistent with or not consistent with our current, um, LCP and what kind of LCP amendments we would need, um, to get the plan approved and certified. And then they're also working on the environmental document. And, um, that will be presented along with the final draft specific plan next year in February, March, um, for those, uh, final hybrid meetings. So we are really looking for comments, feedback on the district themes and priorities that I presented, um, the planning scenarios that were presented. And if there's anything we missed, um, here's a, thank you again. Please go to the survey, uh, to the website. It's really easy. It's just www.waterfronteureka.com. Take the survey, check it out, get on the email list, email us, provide any comment. If you're not ready now, come to the City Council meeting. I'm going to stop screen sharing right now. And I'm available for questions, as well as the rest of the team. Um, Kristen and Kristen have been integral in helping me through this process with Dudak as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions, comments, and feedback from the commission?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, Ms. Castellano, it was the ranking of the scenarios was kind of striking to me. Uh, how many people did you have take the survey?
In the, in the, in the public workshop, um, we had, in the March meeting, when we did the, yeah, the bar graphs before the scenarios came out, we had quite a, quite a bit of turnout. I think there was like 50, maybe 60 participants. But then for our June meeting, when we presented the three scenarios for each district, it actually was less participation. I think it was only like 30, because apparently it was the first day of the Ju- January 6th insurrection hearings, which we didn't know about, so.
I, I might have predicted the ranking, but I certainly would have predicted the kind of extent of it. So it, it may be a sample thing, but I could also just be off. Thank you.
Um, yeah, uh, Caitlin, did we have, I noticed in your stakeholder list, you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce. At the meetings that have occurred, were there representative samples of the business community in Old Town? Did people find out about it and participate of their own volition?
I would not know that. Um, I do know, we, we do have a list of emails and names from those public workshops. Um, but I, looking at the emails and names, I, I still am getting to know the community. Um, I do know for the stakeholder interviews going forward, everyone in Eureka Main Street is getting invited so they can choose to participate or not. And everyone in, even the Eureka Chamber of Commerce, which, after talking with their executive director, she said about, you know, we'd be lucky if 50 people signed up, but they have like 500 members. And so it's, it's, it's being sent out. Everyone is being invited in the business community.
Okay, thanks. And then, excuse me, um, so the, I didn't see much mention about, uh, bike and pet facilities and whether that will be a component of this visioning. Um, I know we're, we're about to start up a cycle for a bicycle plan, but independent of that, would there be, uh, any, any attention given to that in some of the scenarios, or is there that we, that I missed?
Yeah, um, as part of the district priorities in one of those bar graphs, the, uh, bike, bicycle infrastructure and, you know, pedestrian parks and activated bikeways, you know, the, they were, they were, they got high percentages. So that's definitely a priority for the districts. I mean, I think even Library District was, got the highest percentage for bike infrastructure that people wanted, but they were all over 50%. So they definitely are a priority for bike and pet improvements.
And you had examples of the sort of type of development vision, um, theoretical possibilities. But do you have anything like that for changes to bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure with, you know, any concepts that can be provided or were provided?
Yeah, I don't think we saw any designated bike lanes, but a- all the scenarios had, you know, wide sidewalks and were pedestrian-focused, you know, frontages and sidewalks. Um, so that's definitely a good comment to bring to Dudak.
And also just, you know, it seems like we just saw the advent of street closures during the, one of the more recent Artal- Arts Alive. Uh, and so to the extent that that is something that might be developed into something more robust. And so to the extent that that is something that might be developed into something more robust, uh, I think that would be appropriate. And I did have a question about what a activated alleyway is.
Um, I, I believe an activated alleyway is, it's kind of like opera alley and and shug alley where it's like, it's an alleyway, but it's a street now and it, it has, it'll be subject to frontage requirements, you know, treated like a street. Um, which right now, you know, our street frontages have different requirements than alleyways. So if you activate the alley, have its own name and addresses and, and really make it more pedestrian, make it like a street essentially, even though it's an alley still.
So we have a, a couple of alleys that um have had murals added during the um, the yearly mural festival. Um, we have looked at, um, for example, installing lights back and forth across the alley between the buildings and that kind of thing, just to make them more inviting um to pedestrians. Um, the one by the Clark Museum there on E Street, um, going westbound. Um, that one's kind of a, an activated alley as an example.
Okay, thanks, I think that's most of my questions, yeah, thanks.
Are we limiting this to questions and then are we going to offer an opportunity for comment? I don't know if anybody is here to offer it, but I can save my comments for that time if we are following that, that procedure.
I think they're looking for anything, questions and comments, yeah, feedback.
Okay, here we go. Um, well, first of all, I have been really impressed with the outreach. It's been very well designed, so hats off to city staff and to Dudek as well. Um, I'm really excited to see so much density and so much focus on, um, yeah, pedestrian frontages and real sort of creating um more human activity in Old Town. I think that's really the most important thing, bring more people to Old Town, have them um, be taking part in safe activities that enrich our downtown and our Old Town. And I would also, um, you know, echo one of the comments that we saw before us about really trying to use this plan as an opportunity to guide future development along the corridor to the Carson Mansion. I just feel like that's a real missed opportunity. Um, if we don't consider ways to guide people up Second Street to the Carson Mansion, particularly for tourists. And um, I'm completely supportive of sort of the breakdown between the different visions that is coming from the community engagement. But I also think that there could be elements of each, each strategy that could be successful. You know, why retain all the high density or the, the highest density for managed retreat instead of incorporating it into something that was really more community focused, um, why not try and incorporate things for tourists as well as things for locals? So I understand it wouldn't be completely black and white. Um, but I hope in, you know, when we get the plan in front of us, that it would really be more holistic than just either or, thank you.
I was a little surprised to see that there's not a lot of value, I guess, perceived value of tourism down in Old Town, because certainly coming from a business that is fully funded by tourists, May through September. I think there's kind of a disconnect there, but um, Old Town definitely has a lot of tourism opportunity and especially if there were more going on and more access to the bay um and water activities and things of that nature. I think um we could see a rise there, but um, I'm definitely, I, I could see that it was in a, in a small section there, but I don't think it should be overlooked.
I guess one comment I guess I have, I have been monitoring the gateway plan in Arcata a little bit. And I noticed that there were some development comments about some of the logistics involved with developing large story buildings and how the seismic requirements and liquefaction considerations can be rather onerous and, and present some unique challenges. And I don't profess to be an expert on those things, but to the extent that we have people that, that have some experience and we don't, and we're not accustomed in this county and the city of seeing that kind of development in recent years. But I think that would be, you know, an important voice to hear from. Um, and I don't know whether or not that's been a part of the, the, but, but to the extent that maybe the builders exchange or some representative could be uh an asset to, or even an architectural firm perhaps, you know, with some familiarity. Because there is a lot of fill in old, in Old Town. And I think liquefaction will be an issue for anything with large numbers of stories.
If I may just chime in, um, we, there is going to be the environmental um secret document aspect. And so they are going to be looking at the, the EIR already adopted for the twenty forty general plan and then um doing a supplemental to see if any, if it was sufficient in those areas, you know, liquefaction, the hazard section. And if additional studies or information will be needed, so we will be looking at that.
So quick clarifying question on the environmental piece, I did see in the um, schedule is pretty short. So I guess the assumption is it'll be pretty straightforward. Um, is the plan then to tear off of the document? Because my understanding is you can't undertake a supplemental if there will be new environmental impacts. You would have to tear off of the original document. So are there any anticipated new environmental impacts?
We are hoping that it is an addendum and that there aren't any additional anticipated new environmental impacts because of the twenty forty general plan, the EIR accounted for higher density development and intensity already in the, this area in the, the districts. Um, so we're hoping there's not going to be any additional, but of course, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. When they, you know, update the checklist and start working on those sections that they think, they're supposed to tell us that's part of their scope on if there is going to be any new impacts. But the general plan already identified highly, much higher density and intensity development in these areas compared to the current LCP. And the issue is our twenty forty general plan, you know, is not certified in the coastal zone. And so part of what the consultant is doing is they're looking at that consistency analysis um to, you know, help us. This, this effort should help us through our LCP update as well. And I'm not sure if Kristen or Krista want to chime in on that.
I would just say that we would remain flexible with our timeline and adjust as necessary.
I know, fingers crossed. That's always kind of the piece that stretches, I mean, anything could get stretched out, but environmental definitely can be that way.
Yeah, and in, I, you know, basically what's filled land kind of follows where the sea level rise hazard zone is. And I'm sure that, you know, there's definitely, it's, it's more expensive to develop there. Because you need to account for that uncharacterized fill that was placed. Um, so that's just something to think about. I mean, if we, when we're, especially thinking about C to F, I think we have to think about who has the capacity to develop there and what they could develop, given that it's going to be expensive to develop that area. Also accounting for sea level rise there, it's going to require, you know, adding fill or building high.
Any other questions, comments or feedback? No?
If anything should occur to you after the meeting, feel free to just let us know.
Sure, and then would you, we need to point to, is there anyone that would like to volunteer?
I would love to, but I'm also happy to defer if anyone else is really excited about it. You're making an excited face.
A great representative, I'd love to do it too, I just couldn't be gone for the like three weeks out of that time period. And I know it's going to be hard for me to attend, so, but I'm excited too about the opportunity, so I think you'd be a great representative.
I, I have a mild interest in this, but no particular passion or expertise, so I would defer to somebody that had one or both of those things. But if we need a volunteer, I, I will step forward.
My interest would be to, to make sure that, you know, historically, we have a good idea of how we're going to mix those different uses and how that works. But I think DLO could easily handle that part and.
Do we need to have two? Can we send one?
Prefer that you have two.
I see.
Otherwise you'll be outnumbered by others.
Fair enough.
By my comments, I probably will be bringing more of a bicycle. I want to make sure that those gets considered and to the extent that reallocating the rights of way in certain parts of Old Town, I think is an important part of visioning for this and may or may not be well represented. I, I am not, not as familiar to date.
I think it's an important view, you should bring it there.
But I'm happy to, because, you know, I'm, I'm happy to listen to the report from you guys and, and.
It sounds like you're volunteering.
That's what I was going to say.
I think we got her too. Thank you.
And definitely, um, it probably would not be, I have, having this idea, which probably would not be appropriate to like ask if you guys would like us to bring anything on your behalf. But I guess if you send it to staff, they will forward it to the group. But definitely, if there is anything that you want to make sure we include, please don't hesitate to tell us and we'll bring it to the group.
Yeah, feel, feel free to go ahead and send that information to me.
Anything else from you?
I do, just wanted to give you an update on staff. Um, so we had an assistant planner, uh, Jacob Nunez, uh, who I'm not sure has ever actually presented in front of you, but um, he has now left and um moved to Oregon uh for his, uh, a job that his wife was able to get up in Oregon. Um, so we do have that as a vacant position. And uh, we were also approved in this year's budget for a new assistant planner position. So we are going through the process of um interviews uh with the hopes of filling those two positions sooner rather than later. So um, we are short staffed at this point in time. Um, we do have a, a planning technician who's currently working forty hours a week, um, but is going to be going to grad school. So her hours are going to be reduced at some point in the future. So just wanted to keep you updated on where we are as far as staff goes.
Sounds like you're in the same place everybody else is.
Yeah, unfortunately. And that's all I had for you this evening.
Thank you. Do you have something to say?
Uh, I would like to take a couple minutes and uh talk about a meeting that I attended, uh, really on behalf of my day job at Papa and Barclay. But I found it interesting as a citizen, I thought uh my fellow commissioners here might be interested. This is about the pop-up improvements that Caltrans is going to be making on Broadway. And they will start just before the Papa and Barclay facility at the south end of town and go almost up to the bend. Um, and so those will be like Bullards, temporary bike lanes, other traffic calming and that kind of thing. I think the key is that people should really, you know, take note as they're experiencing this stuff and engage with the process. I think there will be kind of a knee jerk, I hate this response by a lot of folks. Uh, and, and I'm going to be one of them when I'm, lose my acceleration lane coming out of our Broadway facility, the former Kmart. But I also have bicycled that route and uh, boy, would a bike lane be nice. So the, uh, as with many of these things, the public um engagement is going to be really important. Caltrans is making that pretty easy, there'll be QR codes up along the road and that kind of thing. So um, both for you, but other people that you talk to, you know, tell them to notice how it affects them, what they think, and then participate. That's what I have.
Thank you for the information, anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Good work, everybody.